So Bridgette O'Leary is here. She is our Spanish teacher. And she is going to talk a little bit about the Seal of Biliteracy, which is something that she and the other district language teachers have been working on. And she'll be able to explain a little bit more. We may ask you guys for some support. Did you do the source thing? I always struggle with this.
Source?
Yeah. You've got sound.
Hi, Ellen.
I have no idea. Something or... Something. Something.
I was hoping for all just to get my hearing.
I think it was a parent's agenda anyway. An explanation, I think.
Yeah. I can do it without it.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. You can talk and I'll figure it out, see if I can mess.
That box is there. You're building this one?
No? Something?
Maybe. No.
Sorry, we always seem to have a trouble with this projector.
I'll just use it.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. My name's Bridgette. And I'm a Spanish teacher at Ennisburg. And Brian Garvey, who's the Spanish teacher at Richford, and I are working with Woodstocking in high school to get the Seal of Biliteracy in the state of Vermont. And so if you don't know what the Seal of Biliteracy is, it is a district or statewide recognition of a high level of proficiency in reading, writing, speaking, and listening in English and one other language. And so obviously, here would be Spanish and French. High school graduates who receive this seal will get a special seal on their transcript, their diploma, and there will be a blurb as well in the transcript talking about what exactly the Seal of Biliteracy is. They also get to wear a medal at graduation if they choose. So there was a joint legislative resolution recognizing the Seal of Biliteracy in Vermont in spring of 2018. And after the pilot year, which is this year, it will likely be endorsed by the AOE. So I'm here today because I just want to seek your approval for this initiative and hope that we can launch this and have students who graduate in 2020 receive the Seal of Biliteracy if they choose. It's a voluntary program, so students can choose whether or not they'd like to participate. We think that's a great addition to our school district, and especially being a school that attracts tuition students, the selling point. Richford and Ennisburg will be the only two schools in the area that will have this, at least for next year. I don't know if other schools are interested in going through the process as well, but for now, it'll just be us two. Many students at Ennisburg take Spanish or French through their senior year. I have 20 kids currently on my roster for Spanish IV seniors next year, which is all the kids who are in Spanish III. And communication in a second language is a 21st century vital skill. So it's something these kids will need and will want when they go to college or when they get a job. It's also really cool because it can validate... We have a few students at our school who are non-native English speakers, and they can also get the Seal of Biliteracy if they pass an English equivalent of the test that my Spanish students will take. So it kind of validates them learning English. And then there are also students who are heritage speakers, who are fluent in their family's language as well as English, and they're also eligible to get the Seal of Biliteracy. And that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. You talked a little bit about how the Seal of Biliteracy was that they had to have a high level of proficiency in their English reading, writing, speaking, and listening. But then they also had to demonstrate high proficiency in the language standards too? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's a couple of different ways they can do that. There's a standardized test they can take. It's called the Apple Test. And they can also participate in a panel interview where they would be speaking in the second language to a panel of people. Or they can submit a portfolio and have that be reviewed.
I got you. So it's not necessarily the score that they would have in English class and Spanish class?
Oh, they have to have a certain score in English class as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So right now, you can get a certain score on ACT reading, SAT reading, or three or higher in all four years of English.
Oh, I see. Okay. So it could be one or the other.
Yes. Any of those would qualify.
Okay. But you would need both. You couldn't be very highly proficient in French but not in English or vice versa?
Right.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I like it.
Any other questions?
Are you looking for approval from the board, Bridgette?
I think I motion to support. This would be...
So this is what you and Brian presented this fall? Like, you talked with me about this earlier this year. This is really exciting. It's kind of neat to be on the cusp of something new like this, and it will be interesting to see some of our students go through this process and then end up with that kind of recommendation on the transcript. Thank you for doing the work to get this into Ennisburg and Richford.
Yeah, it makes sense because there's so many different for graduation. There's, you know, Arts Honor Society. Sometimes we have Tech Centers, Tech Center. This just gives... feeds to the language learners, right? The people who like to take them out.
I will make a motion. Second. All those in favor? Yeah?
How is the motion to be written?
I don't know. How's it supposed to be written?
To give support for the... To give support to the...
Seal of Biliteracy. Thank you.
Good job, Rob. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridgette. I'm wondering if you could add something to that, just about as the ability to earn that recognition from graduation? So that people are recognizing in a minute that this has to do with going through a process that kids could learn?
Oh, you mean like a definition of what it is prior to the motion?
Yeah. Bridgette, do you have language that you... Right in the very beginning, when you said what the Seal of Biliteracy was, can you just say that one more time?
It is a district or statewide recognition. Some remains.
Yes. Yeah, man.
I mean, if you could take that language, it'll help people to understand what it is in a minute.
So this is pretty extensive. Do you want this whole slide in there? It says the seal... Okay.
Can I go first?
No. We went past the... Better get through this meeting in time.
Go ahead.
I don't know.
If you make her go last, we'll get out of here by quarter to six. Just get out of there. It works. But I guess you can go first. Nobody else objects?
No. They all object.
That's why I asked.
So I'm gonna start with Act 46 update. So we're in a place now where it... We're in terms of H39, it's now a conference committee. So you have three members of Senate, three members of the House that are trying to decide between the House's version, which would have you merging this year, July 1, 2019, and the Senate Ed's amendment to that bill, which would grant the new elected board with the authority to decide whether or not to delay an additional year. So the only real change since the last time I reported to you is that the conference committee met last Friday for the first time. I did read something today where people were hopeful that by maybe this Friday, the conference committee could try to come to some agreement on where they might land. So in the meantime, we need to continue to move forward and to act as we're ordered to at this point. So on Thursday at 6:30 here in the auditorium, we have the organizational meeting for the Ennisburg-Richford USD. So I think that the major part of the message that I wanted to get out to the board and to the administrators, it is that it is an important meeting because it is important for our community, both this community and Richford, to recognize that this is the opportunity to decide how the merged board will do their business as they move forward with one another. And I also just want to say there are two major reasons why this organizational meeting needs to happen and we need to be able to move forward. One is it is April 9th today, and so we're gonna have an organizational meeting on April 11th. We have to be preparing for kids that are coming back to us next year. This year expires for us on June 30th, and we need to be able to operate on July 1st. So it's really important that if we are merged, we've done everything we can to get an approved budget before July 1. So if we don't organize on April 11th, there will not be enough time with the warning periods to be able to get a budget in front of your voters. So that means that this new merged district would be at the mercy of whatever the legislature comes up with in terms of an operational budget. So we know that they're talking about some language, but we put it completely into their hands if we don't do our best to get this meeting, to get this district organized and to get a budget warned. The other piece of this is if the Senate amendment to this bill is actually what they land on, people that would like to see the additional year before the new unified district becomes operational will lose that opportunity. If we do not organize on the 11th... We organize on the 11th, you'll have a board election on May 21st, right? That Senate amendment grants that new board the authority to decide whether they want to delay. So the way it's written is you will merge unless your newly elected board decides to delay for a year. So if that organizational meeting doesn't happen, you will not have enough time to get a newly elected board in place prior to June 30th, which means that opportunity for the newly elected board to have that conversation about delay or not goes away. So I think that it's important for people to understand whatever side of the fence you're on about Act 46 and about merging in 2019 or merging in 2020, there are really valid reasons on both sides of the fence to organize and do the work that we need to do on the 11th because we have to be able to be prepared to move forward either way. So our intention is once there's a new board in play, if that legislation passes through, they'll make the decision about delay or not delay if that's what ends up being law. But they'll also be warning a budget if the merge is gonna happen in 2019. We need that board to be elected by May 21st in order for us to be able to get a budget in front of the voters for June 27th. So you can see that there's really no wiggle room with the warning periods that we have here. So it doesn't... I just want to say again, I know I've said this before, it doesn't mean that if we miss these that we're off the hook and we don't have to merge. We're still going to have to merge. It's just the agency is gonna decide how we're gonna do it. This is our opportunity to do it on our terms and make those decisions for ourselves.
What happens if on June 27th, we have a budget vote and it fails?
So then we're going to... What we hope is that in the legislature, if they don't come to an agreement on H39, right now, there's language on both the House's version and the Senate's amendment to it that... Where there's a language that says what will happen if you're in that situation and you don't have an approved budget before July 1st, it gives you the amount of money that you can operate.
To operate it.
Okay. So if that... If they can't come to agreement in their conference committee, there's the potential that I would hope that they would attend to that language maybe in a miscellaneous ed bill because I would expect there probably gonna be UUSDs around the state that may struggle with the budget piece. So I really hope that they do attend to that language, whether it's in H39 or in some sort of miscellaneous ed bill. Because ultimately, we want to be ready. We want to be able to operate. We want to be able to pay our staff. We have kids coming in August, and we have to be ready for all of them.
Do you know if those conversations are happening, or is that something that they're not even thinking about?
They're very aware of it.
They're very aware of that. Okay.
Would you say that that's accurate? Okay. Any questions on Act 46 or your organizational meeting? People hearing anything in the community?
I haven't been hearing anything.
No word.
Dan French is gonna moderate that.
Oh, yeah. I saw that.
Well, he is gonna open the meeting. So the last time, we had Pat that opened the meeting, and we never got to the part where the moderator is elected, but we... The very first... I think one of the first things you do is elect a moderator. So someone will be elected to be the moderator, and they will take over from Secretary French at that point in the meeting. So he'll open it. Any other questions? Okay. So I'm gonna just go over some staff resignations and some summary information for you. So in Ennisburg Elementary today, Michelle received a letter of resignation from Alex Costantino. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So he is the part-time art teacher at the elementary school, so she's gonna be posting that position. So I would ask that the board make a motion to accept Alex's letter of resignation.
Second?
Sure. Yes, you're asking. Yes, sir.
You said, "Do you want a second?"
All those in favor accepting his resignation?
Aye.
How many years has he been here?
Gosh, yeah. He's been for a while.
I think at least five.
Five, yeah.
Just five. And he's been offered a full-time position down in St. Albans.
At least.
So for Michelle, that's all we know about at that point. She's been knocking on wood and hoping that that's the way it stays. For Ennisburg Middle School, we still have a position open for like a reading interventionist position. It's been open most of the year. We haven't had a lot of candidates for that role, so that continues to be open. We have a driver's ed teacher position.
I also have Kelly, which is...
Oh, yes.
I have a letter. Kelly is leaving at the end of this year, going to be pursuing some independent businesses, and so we will be looking for a new admin assistant. I'm hoping you will accept that. Yes. Or maybe I'm hoping you won't.
I know.
I wonder if anybody's ever heard of my band. Just doing this.
So the same thing. Would you accept Kelly's resignation?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Still advertising for a driver's ed teacher. Ms. Humken, Social Studies.
I don't have anything here.
Okay. So we have advertised for a high school math teacher. You had Jen Gaffney, who was out on a one-year leave. So Jen has submitted a letter of resignation. She's not gonna be returning. So I'd ask for you to make a motion to accept Jennifer Gaffney's letter of resignation.
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
I'm checking everybody in there's brothers looking for a math teacher.
I don't think we actually brought a letter to Rachel and Carly.
I brought a letter to Rachel.
I think you accepted Rachel last time.
You didn't make a motion to accept it, did you?
No, we didn't.
Oh, okay. Maybe it was.
I know I brought it.
Yes. It was brought, so...
So you also have Carly Bressard, your art teacher, who is gonna be leaving. She's your full-time art teacher. We did not bring that last time, I don't believe. So I'd ask for you to accept her resignation.
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then Joe Marceau, he's your half-time French teacher. He has also submitted a letter of resignation. I'd ask you to do the same for Joe. He's been here for how long?
Six or seven years.
This was his second retirement.
I'm teaching a really long time.
Move. Second.
All those in favor for the older addition? Yeah. All right.
The last opening that you have is your high school principal's position. I prefer you move not to accept that one. So as you know, Eric has accepted a position to be the new director of the Green Mountain Technical and Career Center in Hyde Park. We're gonna be incredibly sad to see him leave Ennisburg.
It's gonna be tough to leave Ennisburg.
I used to go in a helicopter, but you... That road's awful.
So someone wants to make a motion for that letter?
Who wants to make it?
Move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye with a ring. Thank you all. I really appreciate all your support.
Thank you, Eric.
Yes. My son is bummed. Yeah?
I think mine was too.
There's a lot of people that are bummed.
But we do want to thank Eric for his work and wish him luck in his next position. Now, he's sat for a while, but he's working really hard to help to ease this transition to the next leader, which we'll talk about in just a moment. In terms of Cold Hollow Career Center, we have no openings at this time unless Nate has told me anything the last couple of days.
That is cool.
Okay. Good. So...
We've been having a lot of gifts.
Yes, really. Oh, yeah, it is.
So we're in a place where we're jumping into hiring season, and you guys are meeting monthly. Not sure this board, are you typically on hiring committees for teachers?
Yes, if somebody can attend.
Okay. So are you typically wanting them to... The committee, the principal, myself, to bring the candidate back for formal approval at the board? Are you willing to grant authority as long as one of you has been asked to be on a hiring committee, once we have found the right candidate and done the proper background checks, to grant the authority to make the decision and offer people contracts?
I think usually we do.
Yeah. Typically. Yeah.
So I'm asking this permission because it's four weeks between board meetings. You can see that we have a pile here, and what... Until they sign that contract, you still kind of have people out there that...
Sure.
They're not legally obligated to come. And we are just in a place with hiring that we would like to be able to, once your principals have gone through the search, move quickly. So you just need to make a motion.
Make the motion to hire away from the table? To the superintendent, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll move.
Second. All those in favor? Do you have permission?
Yeah. Thank you. So there's a principal search timeline, which... So am I not gonna be able to project up there?
Yeah, you should. It's... Depends on who's...
We have it, and I have it. Oh, you already have it? Yeah. Perfect. That's awesome. I'm so glad I thought you had sent you that.
I pulled up the email today. I think it was in here.
So what I sent to you was a really condensed timeline for a principal search because I think we all recognize we're in that part of the year where, you know, we want to make sure that we have a principal under contract. So this is really tentative. So we opened this position on Monday, last week, on April 1st. I met with the leadership team here at the high school on Friday to just talk through like staffing priorities, what their hope and wish is for the next leader, a process for getting feedback from staff, students, community members, and parents about participation in a screening committee. We reviewed the timeline and the process with them, and we had conversations just about existing leadership structures within the building. On today, I'm presenting to you the proposed makeup of the screening committee that the leadership team came up with. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about that. This has not been finalized, but their initial thoughts are that they really think that Rachel should be a part of the hiring process as the middle school principal. Amanda works incredibly closely with the principal. They were hoping that she would be interested. They talked about potentially asking that your head of maintenance, Doug, athletic director, possibly, but we know... We're not sure about those two, but just expressing interest that they want to be there. They wanted to have a minimum of three teachers that were part of the screening committee, and they want it to be a representative group, so that it's not three ELA teachers, that there's someone that's representing the arts and some other content areas. They were hoping to have at least one support staff person and at least one to two parents on the screening committee, and two to three students on the screening committee. They're also hopeful that we can have some interest from community members, and even talked about maybe getting an elementary or a middle school parent who has kind of that vision forward of their children are coming to the high school. I want to just back up to the student piece. I forgot to say this. They actually said they were hoping for three students if there was enough interest so they could have a ninth grader, a 10th grader, and an 11th grader on that committee. So we're talking about a relatively big screening committee, but I think that's pretty typical court administrator position. So they developed really quickly. Their team took it on and developed... There's something online if people are interested in being on the screening committee, and I think Eric pushed it out to his staff as well.
Yeah, I already have responses here.
Okay. So there are people that are signing up if they're interested in being on the screening committee, and then that leadership team is gonna meet on Thursday and try to take all of that and make a representative group for the screening committee. So in terms of board representation, I wasn't sure how many board members wanted to sit at the screening level. You're gonna get that final round two of finalists, but are there people that want to sit at the screening level?
Probably a new.
What?
Probably a new.
You could do it?
And I was gonna say, I would be interested too. Like I said, I'm gone for a chunk of April break, so if that's not ideal, then...
I think that the actual interviews will likely be for the screening committee over the April break.
They would be. So then, yeah. Because I'll be gone from the 22nd to the 25th.
So Rick and Amy, if you want to think on that, either of you, if you look at the schedule, just decide, just let me know.
I'll probably be interested, but...
What's that?
I said, "I'll probably be interested," but I'm gonna think on it a little bit.
So we'll have to talk about the board interview element of this. We can get back to that. So what we're hoping is by Monday, if there are enough candidates on school spring, we can grant access to the screening committee. And again, I made a really condensed timeline in the hopes that we would have a pool to draw from. I haven't looked on school spring since, I think it was yesterday, and we have one qualified candidate on there right now. We're hopeful that we have more than that. So I just want to say that if we get to the place on Monday where we don't have any other candidates, I might choose to push that out a week and try to draw more candidates in for that.
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah. So the other piece I just want to say about that, if we go through this process, and we don't have a large pool to draw from, you have some options to think about. You could make a choice to say, "Let's hire an interim and do a full search next year." We could talk about a variety of things like that to get us through one year. So in terms of the screening committee, their job is to review all of the candidates and see who they're interested in interviewing. And then they're gonna be developing whatever questions they're gonna ask. Then they will... They'll be able to give feedback to you. So after they have interviewed on tentatively April 23rd, they're gonna rank order anonymously with their computers that night. They're gonna rank order. If they interview five people, which candidate do you think is your top choice? And then we'll get a... You'll be able to see, like, of these five, three people chose this person as their top choice, but eight people chose this person. Then they'll be able to input, you know, the strengths and concerns that they have about each of the candidates, and then that will all be submitted to the board. So when you get to look at the applicants, you'll get to interview them, and then after your interviews, I'll share with you all of the feedback from the screening committee. So you'll be able to have that kind of weigh in with your own perceptions as well. So in terms of the board, my hope is to, by April 24th, send the board the materials from school spring, so you'll be able to see all of their packets. That'll give you a week to really look through all of it, and if you know people in community X that someone is applying from, you could call around and, you know, check in if you know a fellow board member in that community. and, you know, check in if you know a fellow board member in that community. I'll also be doing some reference checks in that week as well. So at the end of the process, when you get it down to finalists, I would like to do site visits. If people are currently in administrative roles, I think it's always an important part of any process. So that would be Eric and hopefully Eric and either myself or one of the board members if there's an interest from a board member. And then finally, on Thursday, May 2nd, we would host a community staff-student forum. So we would have an opportunity, we would divide the candidates and then from 3:30 to 5:00, we would probably do something near the end of the day so students could meet the candidates and provide some feedback. But then we'd have something for the adults from 3:30 to 5:00 so they can meet the candidates and they'll have a little feedback form where they check the person who they think is the best match for Ennisburg and just have a little comment section. I'll have someone from my office here just inputting that data, so you'll also get that data before you make your final decision. What are your thoughts or questions?
Did you see the screening committee's information and their feedback we'll receive prior to our interview or?
Well, I was going to give it to you after so you could kind of make your own judgment on the candidate, but I can be persuaded to do it before.
I'm just wondering if there's something that multiple people had a concern or question about that we could formulate a question to address that concern?
That's a good point. You could do it before.
Don't want to interview us too.
What do you think about the timelines?
Good, I mean, it definitely is, it's a push, but I think, yeah, you probably could act a little later.
So as I get closer to the end of the week, I'll be looking back in there and by Monday, if I don't feel like we have an adequate pool to at least do an initial screening with, I'm going to email out to the board and just say I'm adjusting this timeline and then we'll bump it back to the top of the School Spring list. Okay? So in the meantime, it would be helpful, what I did in another community is to just start a little Google Doc for you to, if you think of a question that you would like to ask the new candidate, I'm just going to put a blank, a blank list on there and if you want to put your question in there and then we'll come back together before the interview and be able to narrow that down to see which questions the board actually wants to ask. Anything else on that? Okay, I'm going to move on to negotiations. So happy to report that negotiations are done. We have a tentative agreement with both the Teachers Association and the Support Staff. We finished the Support Staff last Wednesday, there are two rounds with them. So I know that right now the teachers are going school to school and they're working to get that master agreement ratified and we're working through the Support Staff ratification process as well. So we don't have it signed yet, but we do have tentative agreements on both. In terms of legislative update, I had been providing you summaries. I have feedback from board members that, they were getting summaries from the V S B A and members had said to me they didn't feel like they needed a second summary, but if there are questions as we're going through.
They don't mind second summaries.
You're okay with second summaries?
Because sometimes you say something and they nullify it.
Okay. So I don't have one for now, but I can do it for our next legislative summary. So I think that the primary focus, we spent a lot of time thinking about H39 and impacts of the two versions and the other, the big part is around blood testing, the drinking water. And I think in terms of Ennisburg, at least your elementary school, as actually both Ennisburg and Richard Elementary were parts of the pilot project last year. So I think the, my last update from the legislature came last week and they were really in a place where everybody, I think, is in agreement that it's important to make sure that we have clean drinking water for all of our kids. The part that they're debating right now is the funding. And I haven't checked in on this since the middle of last week, so I know that they were. I think they were at a place where there was a debate over whether or not it was going to be 100% funded at the state level or if it was going to be like a 70-30 split so that the schools were contributing as well to that. So that's kind of where that one landed.
Do you know other education bills make it out of committee?
Yeah, the ethnic studies.
I looked at that last week. I don't remember.
The ethnic studies bill, which was passed that schools are going to be required to work that into their curriculum.
Did it come out of?
I'm pretty sure it did.
I thought it did.
What?
Look it up. I think it caught to the best stats.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it did.
I think there were some, I think the last time I had tuned into that piece, there were some parts that were still debating.
Oh, really? Yeah. Which is going to, it did make it to move?
And signed.
And signed, that's what I thought, for sure. Which is going to play into PD and all of that.
I'll look into that one for next time and make sure I have that information.
What does that mean? I mean, was the, what's the ethnic?
Yeah, as far as clarity, but from what I'm reading, it's just like that basically, you know, this is my interpretation of it, which is nothing wrong, but that, you know, just like, for instance, proficiencies, like they say that here are some standards that you should meet. Well, there's going to be standards around developing curriculum that has a diverse ethnic variety in it.
So more equitable representation of content.
Right. But now there's going to be actually like state mandates about you doing that opposed to just good practice.
I know that there's, I want to speak more clearly about that. I don't want to misspeak on this right now, so I'm reluctant to say much more than that.
Like, I don't know what the specific standards are, but that's the long and short.
I think much of it was pointed to a study committee.
So that was what was in my mind too, but I just am not sure on the date of it. I don't feel like it's, I think that study committee is next year.
Interesting, so it wouldn't be active as of?
I want to look.
Yeah, no, exactly.
That's all I have.
All right, back up for it.
Or is it under your negotiations update?
We did that last time, didn't we?
Yeah.
You did the teachers. You haven't done the pairs yet, but we haven't gotten a draft out to you, so probably that's May.
I did write in there, ratify the teacher master agreement. I don't know why I wrote that. But I've not deleted that from the last time.
All right, Morgan?
Financial report is in your packet. I'm going to stick with my story that we still don't have the tuition figures yet and I've asked several times and the answer is still consistently two weeks from whatever I asked.
Okay.
The only action that I have is that this is the time of year when we either bid out your Mullen contract for the schools here or you can choose to renew it. The contractor's willing to take the same, same terms. I believe we bid it out last year and it's entirely up to you. You tell me which way you want to go and I'm going to go there.
Avery, you have it right now?
Avery has it, serious.
Last year.
And how's that one?
Best one we've had since I've been here.
I'm tracking. Due diligence, exactly.
Stones aren't flying.
Yeah, that's all I ask.
So we okay with rolling it over?
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right. Move, second. All in favor?
I want to know that and unless you have anything for me, that's all I had. Nate?
I don't have time. The biggest thing is currently going on today and tomorrow is our students are participating in Skilled USA. We have a record number of kids participating. That's good and bad. The good part is they're participating, the bad part is if they win, I'll have to be coming back for some money because send them the blue book for nationals. So we'll see how that plays out.
We don't have any, so.
Right. So catch yourself a game. Another than that, sugaring season is in full swing for our forestry kids, so they've been busting out some maple syrup and a lot of kids, a lot of alumni have been showing up at the Sugar House after school and on weekends, so that's just all we can see. And came up last week and got to see the kids boiling and got to get walk through the process, so.
It was very fun. Like that was the most fun I've had in a long time. It was so fun to see them in their element in the Sugar House, like just talking about the technical part of the process.
Is that where they pulled a joke on me? You posted something about Amy.
No. That was the, well, some of Nace's teachers, some of Beth's teachers. They pranked me.
Primarily by Jason Robdoy.
They got me.
And so that's really, that's really it. We'll see tomorrow night how we fare and I don't know, I don't know if anybody's going to go down to the dinner. I think we have a couple of seats and you guys want a dinner, but I think people are busy, so. We also have a record number of co-op kids. I don't have that much, but we've got a lot of kids that are spending time in different workplaces and a lot of kids are getting hired. The amount of businesses coming to us looking for employers, global foundations is, you know, on my, calling me every day saying they want to come up there and advertise for kids, seniors that have any sort of technical aptitude, starting them off at 18:15 hour the day after graduation and pay for their schooling. SD Ireland is doing the same thing. It's just they cannot get enough qualified individuals to get in their doors to work and they're going around the tech centers all around the state trying to get in, get an audience to recruit. That's, I've never seen that before where they just stack. But it's everywhere. Bus drivers, five dollar signing bonuses, it's just.
So if anybody did have time to go to the Skilled USA dinner, went to that last year and it was a really awesome event, I can't go this year, I have a board meeting, but I'm not sure we're throwing that out.
Yeah, if you had, like I said, I'm still in there whether I can go, but I know we'll have at least four or five teachers down there, about 25 to 30 kids and there's about, let's say about 400, 500 kids from around the state overall. If you want a free dinner, let me know and then we'll put some lists. Michelle?
Okay, so I just, again, shared a bunch of events coming up. Some parent-teacher conferences next week on Thursday. Independent field review, that's going to be all of us. I'm sure we've talked about it at other board meetings, but I just wanted to be sure, you know, on April 30th, there'll be plenty of visitors going between our buildings to check out happenings and hopefully finding all kinds of positive things that can be shared. And I put in two teachers, Mary Ellis and Heather Borguard, that have been helping quite a bit trying to organize and have gotten to other area schools to do observations. So it's nice to have their help with that. Last game that day, we have April 18th, but I didn't see that the middle and high schools listed on that, so.
We already had ours last week.
So we've missed two days, so they gave us that one. We'll see if we can go, hopefully we will. And then I wanted to just include, I think I try to do at least once a year, an after-school program listing, so I think it's, yeah, it's in my packet, so it must be in yours, just so you can get a feel for what kinds of things we're trying to, you know, set up for kids. This is just our last session's offerings and again, we fill out pretty quickly when they go out and about and if anybody has any kind of need for funding, we do make a lot of different adjustments to be sure we're not, just making sure we can capture as many families as can be into the program. And then lastly, I told Eric last Friday, I'll try not to cry when I see him after getting that news, but I do want you to know, I appreciate all the stuff you've done for the last, what, 13, 14 years to steady, steady great work here at Ennisburg and schools and, you know, it makes such a difference because I do believe a school makes such growth that they can maintain that leadership and, you know, you did such a great job in middle school and again, high school is very fortunate to have you as long as you did. That's all I have?
Rachel?
So we had student-led conferences in March at the end of the month. We had over 70% family participation that night and we also have an expectation that every student prepared a presentation, so even if they had a parent who didn't come in that evening, they picked an adult to present to them in the school. So everyone had the experience of doing a student-led conference, talking about their learning and we get really positive feedback. Every year we try to refine and improve that process, but I don't know, it's just really nice to see kids take the lead and explain their learning and how they're doing to their parents and share artifacts and things they're really proud of, so it's a, it's a great process. Just a testing update too, we start S VAC, science and P E testing. The month of May is kind of our month and I've attached a calendar which was color-coded on the digital version, but isn't here, so in varieties of shades of gray, you can see which grade levels are doing which content throughout the month. And aside from personnel stuff.
Just understand that, a big old puddle of guilt over here. Most of my stuff has already been covered. Lynn got the personnel, Bridget presented the CIO by Literacy. The only other reminders I have for you is that the Tuesday of break, the 24th, 23rd, is the point and distribution drill that's going to be happening here, so that end of the building will be closed off through the day until about 1:00 or 2:00. They'll be packed up by then, so baseball or softball needs to get in there, they can later in the day. Our ninth grade P O P reviews are happening next Wednesday evening from 4:30 to 7:30, or 3:30 to 7:30 and that's about it.
All right. Anybody have any questions for anyone? Motion adjourned?
Are we talking about?
We can go, we're going. Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
We can do it next time. Okay. All right. Oh, you're going to get consistent.
Like a pause or?
Guess we are.
I think that makes way sense.
All right, so we good now? All right. All right, motion adjourned?
Well, I can't even go home now. Can we talk about something else? No. No. Now he gets out of practice at 6:00.
Second.
Second. Not going home and coming back.
All right, we're adjourned. Teacher conference, how's it going?
Five, 22.